Belle Fountain City Council is now in session. Please rise for the invocation led by Councilman Ailer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we come together this evening to conduct our city business, we continue to give you thanks for the opportunity to live in this community. Please guide us as we continue to be our city students. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Pursuant to casual safety code regulation, any members of the audience who are wearing headgear need to remove that headgear. Thank you. With a quick police call roll.
Mrs. Baker.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick. Mrs. James.
Here.
Mr. Reeser.
Here.
Mr. Springs.
Here.
Mr. Ailer.
Here.
Mr. Springs.
I make a motion that we approve the absence of Mrs. Fitzpatrick, seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
I make a motion that we suspend the reading of the minute, seconded by Mrs. James.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? She's getting Mr. Ailer. Did you call Mr. Ailer?
Oh, Mr. Ailer, I'm sorry.
Any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, before we move to administrative reports, I just need to do a little bit of housekeeping that we didn't get to before our last meeting about the second meeting in December. It's been customary, at least since I've been on council, that we have canceled the second meeting of the month in December. This year, that meeting happens to fall on Christmas Eve. It's important that we decide how we're going to proceed because we have a pretty full legislative agenda tonight, and if there are items that need to be read three times, then everybody needs to make plans to be here Christmas Eve. If not, if everybody wants to move through that agenda tonight, meaning we have to clear that legislative agenda tonight, I'll entertain a motion and a second to cancel the meeting. Mrs. Baker.
I'd like to make a motion that we cancel the December 24th meeting.
Seconded by Mr. Reeser.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
And Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Now, we'll move to administrative reports. Mayor's Office, Mayor Christman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Good evening, guests. Couple things I have tonight. I'd like to make an appointment to the Shade Tree Commission. Robin Wonderly. Her name was given to me and requested that I appoint her to Shade Tree and talking with chairman, chairperson of Shade Tree Commission, which is now that Baker. Where I'd like to appoint her is on a three-year term.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to appoint Robin Wonderly to a three-year term to the Shade Tree Commission. Motion by Mr. Ailer, seconded by Mrs. James.
And secondly, we have more guests tonight. I have two new firefighters just swearing in.
Can we call that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
On this is for the Robin Wonderly. Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. James.
Yes.
Mr. Reeser.
Yes.
Mr. Springs.
Yes.
Mr. Ailer.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry about that.
Now I can swear. And I have two new firefighters just swearing in. Jonathan, would you come up? This is Jonathan Downing. Come around here, please. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jonathan Downing.
I, Jonathan Downing.
Pledge my solemn oath.
Pledge my solemn oath.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Laws of the State of Ohio.
Laws of the State of Ohio.
And ordinances of the City of Belle Fountain.
And ordinances of the City of Belle Fountain.
I pledge and affirm.
I pledge and affirm.
That I will perform my assigned duties.
That I will perform my assigned duties.
In a manner deemed proper and professional.
In a manner deemed proper and professional.
As a firefighter paramedic.
As a firefighter paramedic.
For the City of Belle Fountain Fire Department.
For the City of Belle Fountain Fire Department.
I will uphold and enforce.
I will uphold and enforce.
The law and statutes.
The law and statutes.
According to the authority.
According to the authority.
Responsibility and discretion.
Responsibility and discretion.
Vested in me by my commission.
Vested in me by my commission.
And job classification.
And job classification.
I will abide by the rules, regulations.
I will abide by the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Set forth by the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
Set forth by the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
My position as a firefighter.
My position as a firefighter.
Is that a public service.
Is that a public service.
And I will personally extend every effort.
And I will personally extend every effort.
To fulfill my assigned duties.
To fulfill my assigned duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I will not exceed or misuse.
I will not exceed or misuse.
My authority or job description.
My authority or job description.
As a firefighter paramedic.
As a firefighter paramedic.
For unauthorized or unethical gain.
For unauthorized or unethical gain.
I pledge my personal conduct.
I pledge my personal conduct.
At all times.
At all times.
To be such as not to reflect.
To be such as and not to reflect.
Adversely or unfavorably.
Adversely or unfavorably.
Upon myself and the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
Upon myself or the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
To these statements.
To these statements.
I voluntarily pledge myself.
I voluntarily pledge myself.
Without reservations.
Without reservations.
As I accept my commission.
As I accept my commission.
As a firefighter paramedic.
As a firefighter paramedic.
Of the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
Of the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce who you have with us or have with you?
My fiancee Sydney and my future mother-in-law, Lori. Got a little picture?
Jonathan. Today's date is the 10th of December. Welcome aboard.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next, we have Logan Cersey. I, Logan Cersey.
I, Logan Cersey.
Pledge my solemn oath.
Pledge my solemn oath.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Laws of the State of Ohio.
Laws of the State of Ohio.
And ordinances of the City of Belle Fountain.
And ordinance of the City of Belle Fountain.
I pledge and affirm.
I pledge and affirm.
That I will perform my assigned duties.
That I will perform my assigned duties.
In a manner deemed proper and professional.
In a manner deemed proper and professional.
As a firefighter paramedic.
As a firefighter paramedic.
For the City of Belle Fountain Fire Department.
For the City of Belle Fountain Fire Department.
I will uphold and enforce.
I will uphold and enforce.
The law and statutes.
The law and statutes.
According to the authority.
According to the authorities.
Responsibility and discretion.
Responsibility and discretion.
Vested in me by my commission.
Vested in me by my commission.
And job classification.
And job classification.
I will abide by the rules, regulations.
I will abide by the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures.
Policies and procedures.
Set forth by the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
Set forth by the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
My position as a firefighter.
My position as a firefighter.
Is that a public service.
Is that a public service.
And I will personally extend every effort.
And I will personally extend every effort.
To fulfill my assigned duties.
To fulfill my assigned duties.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I will not exceed or misuse.
I will not exceed or misuse.
My authority or job description.
My authority or job description.
As a firefighter paramedic.
As a firefighter paramedic.
For unauthorized or unethical gain.
For unauthorized or unethical gain.
I pledge my personal conduct.
I pledge my personal conduct.
At all times.
At all times.
To be such as not to reflect.
To be such as not to reflect.
Adversely or unfavorably.
Adversely or unfavorably.
Upon myself and the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
Upon myself and the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
To these statements.
To these statements.
I voluntarily pledge myself.
I voluntarily, voluntarily pledge myself.
Without reservations.
Without reservations.
As I accept my commission.
As I accept my commission.
As a firefighter paramedic.
As a firefighter paramedic.
Of the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
Of the Belle Fountain Fire Department.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Who are your guests out here?
Oh, there's more people.
Well, just saying.
This is my stepmom Diana. My father, John. Got Michael and Emma, Detmer, Violet, Nikki, Brian Johnson, and Conny.
Okay. I think they want to hear you.
Yeah.
Your parents. With these two swearing ends, the fire department is now up to full staff.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions or comments for the mayor? Seeing none, we'll move to Service Safety Director, Mr. Dodd.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council. Good evening, guests. Got several items to report on. First, I want to make a request for a couple of items that are on your agenda for this evening. Ordinances 23, I'm sorry, 24-103 and 24-104. Those are both up for second reading tonight. Those deal with utility capacity fee increases. Was passed on first reading, last council meeting. We've had some more discussion, both internally and externally. And we really feel would be prudent to table this for the time being and take it up after the first of the year to give us a little more time to research and educate both ourselves and those this is going to impact to make sure that we are fully understanding the cause and effect of the decision. I think that everyone agrees that a rate increase for capacity and connections is in order. But with the decision of this magnitude, we just want to make sure that we are doing our full due diligence, that we're moving in the right direction there. So I would just ask that the utilities committee would consider tabling those two ordinances when the time is right this evening. So thank you for that consideration. Only other thing I'd like to say, just reflect on the great Christmas parade that we had last Friday night. I was fortunate enough to be able to participate in it, see all the great people downtown. I want to give a huge thanks to all the volunteers that make that happen. It takes an enormous amount of effort to put on an event of that magnitude. And you just don't see all the behind-the-scenes work that goes into that. And I'm talking about everyone from the DDP that helps organize the event, that plans the event, to the folks that help decorate downtown in advance of the event. I think you go through downtown, it looks great. So that doesn't happen without a community of people that care and want to give back and donate their time and talent to that. So thank you to everyone that's had a part in making Belle Fountain, Ohio's Christmas capital, as declared by Mayor Christman earlier this year. So thank you for that. And then finally, well, I shouldn't say finally, just a couple more. Want to give a big shout out to Matty Stotler, Downtown Events Director. What a huge undertaking for her first big event. So great job, Matty. I heard lots of comments. I heard some people say it was the, as far as logistics of it went, it was the best ever. So kudos to you and keep up the good work. We appreciate all your efforts. And then finally, just thank you to our city departments who participated, both as entries in the parade, fire department, police department. Water department had their trucks out there and looked really good. So thanks to all them. And a big thanks to our police department, who had, I think it looked like when I was there, everybody that was on the roster was working that night. So thanks to them for keeping everyone safe and making that happen. So with that, I'll just say Merry Christmas to everyone in my report.
Thank you, Wes. Any questions or comments for Wes?
Yeah.
Mr. Davis.
Mr. I'll just to confirm, 24-102, we're leaving on the, you're pressing, we leave that one on the agenda for this evening?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Ball Director, Mr. Solly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council and guests. Wes stole my thunder there on the two ordinances. I just wanted to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and that is my report.
Thank you, Mr. Solly. Any questions or comments for Mr. Solly? Seeing none, we'll move to Auditorium, Mr. Brentley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council and guests. The first ordinance for today is 24-105, deals with supplementals for wages in both the court and the prosecutor's office. What brought that about is early in the year, or late last year, council adopted ordinances adding additional personnel in managerial and court and in prosecutors. And it was overlooked of adding their wages, expect or anticipated wages to the permanent budget at that time. So that's what this is. I would request that you pass it on first and final, since we need that to pay people for next pay. So if you would, I'd appreciate that. Also, there's another one that is, was brought in late, R-24-107, adopting the Sloan Fund that we do every year for students at Belle Fountain High School to help pay their fees or give them some credit for gift cards for clothing and that. It was late getting to me from the school, so that's why it was late. We wanted, if you'd like to add it, I appreciate that, so that we can get that all done by the end of the year. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Baker.
Would you also explain 24-108 that we're adding?
I can do that. That's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. The Police Department Chief Marlowe had sent a request. The Police Department has, I believe, applied for a United Way grant as part of their grant application process. And so they're asking United Way for $5,000 to continue to support the Police Department's community outreach events. So the resolution is to apply for and accept that with the anticipation of the funds coming in early 2025.
Thank you, Mrs. Solly. Any other further questions for Mr. Brentley or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to Police Chief, Chief Marlowe.
Good evening, everybody. I'm busy. Just a couple of things. The two officers we've sworn in, one of them is currently in field training. He's in about a month into that process. The second officer will start shortly after the holidays. We'll be able to bring him to and start his training. That will leave us then just, once they're finished, one short of our full staff. And then if you remember last time, I had reported to you that we were still waiting on cruisers and I had no idea. Funny enough, as soon as I reported it to you, I'm not kidding you, the next morning I got a call saying they were both sitting on the lot. So we now have all the cruisers that we've been waiting on, I believe, since late 2022. And we're just waiting on parts and upfitting and that sort of thing, which will take a couple of months or so yet. Outside of that, I thank you for your work and support over the year and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments for the chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Fire Department Chief Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council, council and guests. And thank you again for, again, allowing us to butt into your busy evening this evening. So with this swearing in of those two gentlemen tonight, that does, as Mayor Christman said, does bring us up to seven guys per shift on all three shifts. So we are certainly thankful for that. Hopefully, this will be the last time we either swear new guys in for a while. We'll keep our fingers crossed. Also, with our personnel, we are in the process, we just are kind of wrapping up the promotional process for our senior guys being promoted into the assistant chiefs roles. I believe all that left, that is left that needs to be done is just all the score needs to be compiled up to determine the pecking order, and we'll be moving on from there. So that's all I got. If anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions or comments for the chief?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I beg your pardon, but I'm going to skip up and downstairs. Thank you again, everyone.
Engineer's Office, Mr. Bischoff.
Thank you, Mr. President. No reports this evening.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bischoff? Seeing none, we'll move, I thought I saw Miss Strad, she dipped out.
Oh, dipped out, wasn't good.
Yeah, that's okay. Economic Development, Mr. Valrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, council, administration. Two things for you. One, we had our Economic Development Full-on-One Event last Friday in Columbus. Thank you, Mrs. Baker, Mr. Davis, Mayor Christman, Mr. Dodd, for participating in that from our community. Another good turnout. I think there were 700 people registered for the event from across our 11-county Columbus region. One of the primary speakers was author Kevin Kelly, who would have called "Irreplaceable" about placemaking. And one of the things he discussed was that NASDAQ predicted a couple of years ago that consumers will make 95% of the purchase online by 2040. Now, we can see that we're kind of moving in that direction from your normal Amazon shopping to groceries and everything in between. But his point was how important it is to try to make a special experience for people to have. And I think that's something that we have experienced here in Belle Fountain. Probably can be a case study that Mr. Kelly would reference. One of the things he said is the payoff of a place must exceed the perceived effort. So when you're competing against sitting at home and making that order versus, well, it's cold outside, I have to walk somewhere, maybe I pay just a little bit more. Perceived payoff has to be greater than all that effort. That's getting harder and harder and harder to accomplish. He talks about the way that we accomplish that is something that he calls bonfire moments. You can picture a bonfire where everyone comes and spends time together. It's an enjoyable experience, it's something that, it's a magnet. So that's what communities are trying to create, something that you can touch, feel, and experience. It's more than words. It's taking the Christmas capital of Ohio and it's no longer just a sign. It's something that people come downtown to a Christmas parade like, oh, man, that was, that was great. That was worth it. So that's what a lot's happening with the Small Nation Team, with Matty and the DDP. They're trying hard to create those kind of moments that attract people here. And that is not just about our downtown businesses. That also spurs into our ongoing growth. And we had a really neat meeting this morning, our Legislative Impact Meeting. We had a panel of folks talking about housing and real estate development. And one of the things we're discussing is how does Belle Fountain, or how has Belle Fountain kind of gotten on the radar of home builders? And one of those pieces is a downtown that's vibrant, that's desirable. Obviously, we have great business in the area with good jobs, and they continue to expand and grow. We do have a community that is pro-growth and supportive of that, with good utilities and infrastructure. Jack Reeser, County Auditor, mentioned that back in 2018, we had less than 20 lots for sale that had water and sewer available on site. Today, we are, with the Maris Park and Ludlow Ridge, we're sitting around 140. That's a big difference. And those are some of the reasons we're starting to see progress. So I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate council, administration, working hard to do that. Those things didn't just happen by accident. That's a lot of proactive effort and work and planning, envisioning for what we can become. There's a lot of bright future for us in Belle Fountain, and we're just kind of scratching the surface of it. So just want to say thank you, appreciate all the effort that's going on. Last thing I'll share with this, this morning, Ohio High Point Superintendent Rick Smith shared that 13 of his 14 districts are shrinking in student population. Marysville's the only one that has not been shrinking in population. I saw that was telling. And again, supportive of the work that you all are doing, say, hey, it's, it is important. We're trying to find ways to make this a special place that people want to be in. So with that, thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any, before you step back, any questions or comments for Mr. Valrath? Thanks, Ben.
Thanks.
Downtown Director, Ms. Stottler.
Good evening, Mr. President. Good evening, all. Thank you for letting me chat for a second. So even though we did have our biggest event on Friday, we are three weeks deep into the holiday season with the Santa Shed, some holiday free events that we've been hosting. And we've since seen some really good turnouts that I'm very happy about. But obviously, I'm going to review over Friday, December 6th. I will say we had our biggest parade of entry yet, even though we did have some fun flexibility. We had the fairgrounds in use for lighting, display, as well as Belle Fountain High School. So I do really appreciate everyone's effort. We worked well with the Fountain Elementary and Middle School to use their lot, and it was very much appreciated. We are definitely conscious and always working to ensure every year it gets better. You know, as we communicate, take care of the participants that are walking or, you know, building those floats and taking that time to do that. So again, we're always learning and having, you know, all the fun. And then even though with the cold, we did have a great turnout, I think for the parade, I feel like everyone was in the flavor, was out and about. You can definitely see we had a decent turnout, even though it was very, very cold. And so then I just want to thank, hey, the big group that helped make this all happen. It was not just me. I learned a lot and I had a great team behind me. I want to thank all the volunteers that helped, especially the police officers. I know that was a big challenge, and I appreciate all their help. The street and electric departments were great, great assets. We appreciate everything that everyone did for us that day and leading up to that. And then we are excited that this weekend, we are having carriage rides from Friday and Sunday through Sunday. The only street closure will be South Opera through Friday through Sunday. And then on Sunday, due to, we have two different carriage companies that can't make right, or left turn. So we did have to close Porch Avenue, but that will only be from 3:00 to 6:00. And we're being very conscious just to close that during that time and open up after that. So other than that, we'll have a luminary walk next week. Nothing too crazy, just kind of encouraging last-minute spending and coming down and enjoying our beautiful Christmas capital of Ohio. And then just on behalf of the DDP, we thank everyone for helping make this year one of the best ones yet. Merry Christmas to all.
Thank you, Ms. Stottler. Any questions or comments for Ms. Stottler?
I have a quick. First of all, you did a very nice job. And then can you expand on the luminary walk?
Yeah, yeah. So that will just be on the sidewalks. We'll have non-paper bags with stands. And then additionally, we'll have electric light, lights.
Okay.
No hazardous materials.
It sounds very neat, so I'm excited to see that.
Thank you. That concludes the administrative reports. We'll now move to reports from standing committees. Finance Committee, Mrs. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a couple of ordinances and resolutions also for the safety. First is 24-105, and this is the supplemental appropriations that Mr. Brentley talked about in this report, Prosecutor's Office and the Ball Director's Office. We'll be asking for first and final on that. And so we'll be asking to waive the pre-reading rule on that one. Um, we'll be asking for first and final on that, and, um, so we'll be asking to waive the free reading rule, um, on that one. And then, um, Resolution 24-106 is, uh, to create some new fund, um, or accounts, I guess, um, to take care of the, um, debt service and for the parks bond, um, and also for revenue and expenses. Um, this is required by ORC to keep those monies, um, separate, so we'll be asking for adoption on that one. Um, 24-107 is the Earl Sloan Fund. That, uh, is $50 per student. There were 44 students who, um, got that this year, so it's, um, $2,200 going out there. And then, um, we'll be asking to waive the 48-hour notice on that one. And then the 24-108 is the resolution, um, to be able to apply and accept a $5,000 United Way grant for the Belle Fountain Police Department, asking for, um, to waive the 48-hour notification on that one as well. And then for second reading this evening, um, 24-100 is the collective bargaining agreement with the International Association of Firefighters for Safety Services for years 2025 through 2027. Um, we'll be asking to waive the three reading rule on that and to pass that on second and final. Um, and then for adoption this evening is 24-86, which is the temporary appropriations for 2025. Um, and 24-87, um, authorizes the purchases of miscellaneous supplies, equipment, and services for 2025, asking for adoption on that. 24-88 is the compensation for municipal court judge for 2025. Um, that amount is established by our revised code, so we'll ask for adoption on that one. 24-91 is the compensation for council, clerk council, president council, mayor, law director, auditor, and treasurer for 2025. Um, that amount is the same as it was for 2024, asking for adoption on that one. And then the next four are compensation for city employees. Um, 24-92 is for the department supervisors. Um, 24-93, compensation for the service workers. 24-94 is compensation for the clerical workers. And 24-95 is compensation for municipal court employees, um, asking for adoption on all of those. And then 24-98 is the collective bargaining agreement with the Highway Patrolmen's Enamaline Association for Police Safety Services for the years 2025 through 2027, asking for adoption on that one as well. Thank you. That is my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Rules Committee, Mrs. James.
Mr. President, no report.
Uh, Safety Committee, Mr. Reeser.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Utilities Committee, Mr. Springs.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have three ordinances on the agenda tonight. Uh, 24-102, um, is just amending chapters 921, sections, uh, 921.8 and 921.9. And it's just cleaning up the language for minimum amount for payments and refunds on the final bill. We're gonna ask to waive the free reading rule on that one and pass that one on second and final. And then 24-103 and 24-104, we're going to be asking to table those. And then we will, at the request of Mr. Goddard, we'll do similar research and then possibly bring them back to the agenda in '25.
Okay. Um, does that conclude your report?
Yes, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Springs. Streets Committee, Mr. Ailer.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Uh, Sidewalks, Curbs, and Parks Committee, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Um, Audit Committee, uh, in place of Ms. Fitzpatrick, go to you, Mrs. Baker.
Hi, no report, Mr. President.
Mrs. Baker, that will conclude. Reports from standing committees will now move to a portion of our meeting where we welcome communications for citizens. If there are any citizens in the audience who, uh, wish to address Council, please approach the lectern, state your name and address, after which the Chair will recognize you for to speak for up to five minutes.
Jeremy Lavan from West Liberty, Ohio. Um, I just basically run the tail end of Phase 3 of Maris Park, like, you know, I wanted to address the gas issue. About choked it to death back there drinking pot, but anyway, uh, I, well, I guess I come to, if you can, you're that ward, aren't you? If you can rally your neighbors, I've been talking with the gas company for four months now, and I finally got them to say twice, if you can get everyone that you want on the 10 and 179 to go online and fill out an application for service, they think they can pull it off. So we've done that. Okay. You've all filled it out. Okay. So they haven't started yet, gas, they're getting ready to start on ours back at Maris Park, so hopefully they can loop it around.
Maybe, uh...
Go ahead, Mr. Eric.
Uh, maybe a question, uh, from Mr. Valrath, but, uh, have you got any update on Dr. Earl regarding supply?
Um, sorry, you were hiding, weren't you?
It's right. I understand is that from the residential side, they, they've not had any concerns. It's when we start getting to industrial use that, um, we're looking a little tight on things, so, um, I think we're in good shape there.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of interest out there, I believe.
So I just wanted to relay that message to people. The more people you can get to sign up, that gives them the more pushing power for get out there.
Where's that stop? There on, uh, White Pine?
Yeah.
Hey, Jerry, we give you your address.
Oh, 4198, St. Brown 68.
Thank you.
West Liberty. Yeah, White Pine.
White, White Pine South. Okay. Yep, I can get that for you.
Thank you. They said you have more, a lot of free time, so I figured you'd be there.
I, I, gavel's on the, on the desk here, I'm not picking it up.
You're gonna buy lunch.
Real dying real fast.
Sir, you can, yeah.
Donald Poe, 1173 Eris Street. Uh, during your last meeting, you talked about the CRA. I don't see it on this agenda. Is there a more appropriate time to come back and, uh, talk about that at this, uh, this discussion? Or is that already up the agenda?
Mr. Valrath, I don't necessarily limit anybody's comments. That, that particular item, uh, was on the agenda, uh, the last meeting.
Right.
Um, it was a resolution, and it, it passed Council, so it's no longer on our agenda. But if you have some comments and you have some things you want to say about it, you're more than welcome to.
Okay. Well, I tried to, I'm an engineer, so I did run some numbers, and I took the, I looked up like six or seven of the houses that are listed in, in the subdivisions, and the average actually came to a pretty modest $283,000 per resident. And I looked at the calculated, uh, taxes generated at about 1% of the market value. So that gave me a, a way to put, uh, a value on, uh, what might be going on there. I just, since, since you just said that we have 140 lots, that sounds like a good number. I, uh, used that 140 and came up with about $400,000 a year in tax abatements. The, uh, I, I noticed in the last council meeting and in, uh, this Saturday's paper, there was a, uh, rate, well-deserved raises handed out for parks and rec and, uh, city employees to be, uh, gotten based on, uh, the income tax improvement for the parks and rec and, uh, the fact that every time a wage earner gets a raise, the city gets a raise. So, uh, and now with the increase in taxes, even, there'd be even more money coming in for the city. I went online and looked at my taxes and the breakdown of the property taxes and how they're dispersed, with the schools getting 70%, and the corporations 6.8%, JBS 5.7%, General 5.7%. And I went through and just calculated what, on average, the tax abatement would be about $2,000 a year for each house, for the schools. And if, if it's a done deal, I just requested, uh, at least there be some transparency in how much of the taxes are being abated, and because we're not... The reason Howard was here the last time, uh, because the school superintendent said that he's gonna be in the next couple of years needing more money. He's not gonna get it through these places, but somebody's gonna have to make up for the money that he needs. So, like, the, uh, children's services, they just tried to get a tax increase and didn't pass, so they had to go back to their... So there, this, it seems ironic that the city's making these calls to give away these other agencies' money, and they don't have the ability to, every time a wage earner gets an increase, they get an increase. They live and die by the property tax rate. So, uh, at least I think we ought to be publishing, like, send out in our water bill once a year how much of the taxes were abated for that year, so the general public has an idea of exactly what it's costing. I don't know that you know that. I just ran these numbers, and maybe somebody here can give me an idea of what they thought it was gonna be. But I just think it's unfortunate that it... And you can correct me, you may have went out and sold this. I worked out of town for 11 years and just recently retired in '22, so you may have gone through this in the paper and explained all this to everybody. I just wondered if it would have passed, if it would have been presented to the voters, because I never missed a vote, uh, if they would have passed doing this, uh, tax abatement. And at least, we should at least identify what it's, what we're abating every year, because it's gonna go up, and, uh, the schools are gonna have to come back and, and just ask for more money. And, and our taxes will obviously have to go up to make, offset what they're not getting, so, uh, that's all I have to say. Any questions for me? Do you see my logic? I, I went and took the average of six houses being sold in those areas, took the average and then looked at taxes around. It looked like it's about 1% of the market value, and then I just ran the numbers. But I'm sure it would be good, I, I know that the schools need to know, because they need to know that they're not gonna get that income from those houses. So I don't know how they do it, other than they don't add in the values, but that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Valrath.
I think their employees would like a raise, too. It should be good ones, so...
Any other comments from members of Council, or, excuse me, members of the audience? Seeing none, that will conclude the communications from citizens. A portion of our meeting will now move to our legislative agenda with ordinances and resolutions for first reading.
And ordinance making supplemental appropriations and amending the permanent appropriations ordinance for purposes of court, prosecutor's office, and law director, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Baker.
Motion to waive the free reading rule.
Seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mrs. Baker? Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Motion to pass on first and final.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker. Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
A resolution establishing a new fund, establishing new revenue and expense accounts, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Baker.
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Baker for purposes of making a motion to add an item to the agenda, waive the 48-hour notice requirement.
Can we do both of them together or not?
Uh, I think we better do it one at a time, Mrs. Baker.
I'd like to add, uh, Resolution 24-107 to the agenda and, uh, to waive the 48-hour notification.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
A resolution approving the investments and expenditures from the Dr. Earl Sloan Endowments Fund for 2024 and return of unused grants.
Mrs. Baker.
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Um, yes, I'd like to, um, make a motion to add, I have to see where I stuck it. Hang on. Resolution, um, 24-108, um, which authorizes the police chief to apply and accept a grant from the, for the United Way of Lowen County for the outreach funding for 2025. And I'd ask to waive the 48-hour notification.
Seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
A resolution authorizing the police chief to apply for and accept a grant from the United Way of Lowen County Incorporated for community outreach funding for 2025.
Mrs. Baker.
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Well, that will conclude our ordinances and resolutions for first reading. We'll move to ordinances for second reading.
And ordinance approving a new collective bargaining agreement between the International Association of Firefighters and the City of Belle Fountain for fire safety services, commencing January 1st, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Baker.
Motion to waive the three reading rule.
Seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Motion to pass on second and final.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
And ordinance amending certain provision of Chapter 921, utilities, general, of the codified ordinances of the City of Belle Fountain, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Motion to waive the three reading rule. Seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mr. Springs. Motion to pass on second and final. Seconded by Mrs. James.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
Mr. Springs. Motion to adopt. Seconded by Mrs. James.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Springs?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
And ordinance amending certain provision of Chapter 923, Water, of the codified ordinances of the City of Belle Fountain, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. Mr. Springs. I'd like to make a motion to table that for the time being. Seconded by Mr. Reeser.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
And ordinance amending certain provision of Chapter 925 sewers of the codified ordinances of the City of Bell Fountain, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Springs. I'd like to make a motion to table that for the time being. Seconded by Mrs. James.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
That concludes our ordinances for second reading. We'll now move to ordinances for third reading.
And ordinance making temporary appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2025, and ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Baker.
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Ailer.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing the purchase of miscellaneous supplies, equipment, and services for use in 2025 and declaring an emergency in the City of Bell Fountain, Ohio.
Mrs. Baker.
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
I need to abstain because it affects the feminine business.
Extinction noted and accepted.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
And ordinance establishing and providing for compensation of the Bell Fountain Municipal Court Judge for 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Baker.
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?
Yes.
Mr. Ailer?
Yes.
And ordinance establishing and providing for compensation for the presence of council, council members, clerk of council, mayor, law director, and auditor for 2025 and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Baker.
Move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Springs.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Reeser?
Yes.
Mr. Spring?